This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, good evening, everyone. I opened the Southampton Planning Board meeting for October 2nd, 2024. We have a quorum. Dan LaValle, Mark Donald, Stephen Johnson, myself, Paul Deaman. We have our board consultant, Richard Harris, in attendance. And welcome those viewing on Channel 191. Our major agenda item tonight is a presentation by Kyle Finnell, who is here from Pannier Valley Planning Commission regarding draft revisions of a water supply protection zoning bylaw that we had a D L T A grant for. And he's been working on that for the last couple, three months. So he is here tonight to present his findings. And at this point, I would give Kyle the floor. He had sent an email draft, which I had emailed the board, but he had some other changes in addition to that. So he provided some hard copy tonight as well. So Kyle, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of the memo provided is to bring a deal with the water supply protection overlay district by law language. Again, this is part of the D L T A project. Plenty more requested funds to P D C, and we awarded adequate funding. This is not the entirety of the project. This is really just part one of two main tasks. The secondary task is to host a roundtable conversation, a brief meeting, former members of the Pay Act, water aquifer protection advisory committee. I can provide an update on that as well, after we get through the memo. That's license. As the chair mentioned, this, what you have in front of you is really part two of the memo. There are some additions that I will quickly point out. On page five, there's a new second I forgot to include, a speech of broader implications, overlay board. And there was a second on page five, inspecting permits. There are some greater parts provided regarding the issue of incurable service. And there is some regulation regarding that topic. So if it's all right with the board, I'll walk through the memo and ask for those important various subsections of the memo. So as an overview, again, this is the purpose of this memorandum, revealing the town's current water supply protection section. It's Article 7, Section 7.2, the zoning bylaw. We're comparing the existing bylaw language to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, groundwater protection district, and all the bylaw, though it's like they didn't include that. And you know, the existing bylaw includes many of the standards from the law. You know, no burden discrepancy, subsections of the touch on the memo, definitions, definition of the nation, de regulation, especially for the second and third. Any questions at this point? So jumping into definitions, comparing the existing definitions in the bylaw and elsewhere to the general bylaw. Most definitions are included in some locations. What I've provided is a list of recommended definitions from the law bylaw. And for those definitions that are outside of zoning, I've put cross references. Thirteen current definitions that are recommended exist in the general bylaw of the town within Section, or some challenge of two, maybe switches, put down, water protection definitions, and all of that. So what I've provided here would easily be added to Part 2 of the general bylaw, which is the definitions section, section 2.3 specifically. Just cross references for the actual definitions that exist outside of zoning. Any questions at this point?
Keep going, thanks, Kyle.
The next topic I'd like to cover, district delineation. Maybe discrepancy is, is, is the potential for the district boundary to bisect across a lot of parcel. There's no language in the existing bylaw on how to reconcile that. There is regular language coming from the law that's provided. It's a tablet side right there. Regular language reads, where the boundary line of the water supply district divides a lot of a parcel, the requirements established by this overlay district shall apply to the entire lot. So it clarifies for those property owners who might have large parcels that kind of rests on, I don't mean that if any part of the parcel or any part of the lot is inside of overlay, it applies.
Is that, so if I have a 20 acre parcel and one quarter foot of the parcel is in the watershed protection district, the entire parcel is under that jurisdiction?
I think it'd be useful to have a map that showed the Zone 2 boundary and what that change would mean. And what if a parcel gets divided? Let's say you've got the 20 acre piece of property, and there's one acre within the Zone 2, but all of it gets counted. What if you carve off 10 of those acres that are not in that, does that then change the boundary of the water supply protection district? I think you'd have to go to town meeting to amend the map to do so. But so that's, when you use property boundaries or use something other than roadways, for instance, and streams, that's where you start having a problem with zoning boundaries, in particular, this type of zoning boundary.
That sounds quite hypothetical, though, what you just said. What may happen?
It frequently does.
Really?
I mean, if you use the definite, the language that it would incorporate the entire parcel. And that's the reason I think it's important to see where the Zone 2 boundary would be and what would be if you extend it to the perimeter of the parcels, so you can see what type of difference is. If you've got a 20 acre piece of property and 19.9 acres is in the Zone 2, that's not much a change. But if it's, 19.9 is not in Zone 2, and this would make it part of Zone 2, that's a more dramatic change.
So the memo says that the line is geophysical model derived. I get that. But it is the best line for this purpose that we have. Now, the analysis to get at this could look at all of those parcels intersected by the boundary and compare the acreage inside the boundary to the acreage outside the boundary, or simply look at the acreage of the intersected parcels outside the boundary that you presumptively grabbed. And then see if it's a big deal, or visually scan and say, oh, for this landowner, it's the 1%.
I would tell you, when the line goes through a piece of property, when it's a 20 acre piece of property and goes along the edge, that's not a big issue, usually. But when you've got one acre, one and a half acre piece of property, and somebody's building a house on it, and it goes right through the middle of it.
It's when they want to put a gasoline station over it.
Or they want to put some type of oil tank, or where do they put stuff at? And, yeah. So that's, or rent affects the size. Let's say so, in South Hattie, for instance, would allow, has own district of 30,000 square foot lots. If it's in water supply protection district, it becomes 40,000. What if it only gets a corner of it? Does the entire thing have to be 40,000 now? And, because that can affect somebody's ability to build a house.
So without getting into the details of the in-depth G I S analysis, we're doing the zoning bylaw, or zoning map, excuse me, and exploring what we found at the bottom of page four, Footprint Number 2. Just with a quick sort of scan of the zoning map, I'm considering what if the water supply protection boundaries of the overlay district align with rights of way? Would that work to be more definitive of the boundary and negate the need for this recommended language? The amount of roads in the town creates, I think, an impossible scenario. I don't think it can be done in a way that would actually make that simple kind of delineation. You'd end up with essentially the entirety of the town if you tried to just expand and merge right away. And, or you would, you know, negate hours of Zone 2, which are by state regulations, to include.
Can I share my thought on it? I think the line can be the line as the line. Where it is, that's where it falls. If someone has a property, it happens to go through it, what they can do on one side of that line and on the other side of the line, changes. But by having a line at all, we're providing a much better definition of what can happen within a large portion of the waters, of land in town in the water supply protection district. So I guess I'm not, in my opinion, I'm not so concerned over the, those boundary cases. That's my thought.
It becomes administrative challenge, I guarantee you that, from a day-to-day perspective. But I'm not sure there's a good or best solution for it yet.
I think generally speaking, to include this type of language and clarify those boundary potential disputes, and generally speaking, again, you're kind of erring on the side of protection. You know, this is, the aquifer is your sole water supply for the community. If there is a large parcel that sits on the boundary of the overlay district, you're including the entirety of the parcel to try to just add that little bit of protection to your water supply.
I think to make determination this, I think, can you see what type of implication that is?
Since we haven't proceeded with the updating of the zoning map because of this outstanding question, so at this time, we could add a little bit of time to the G I S work and try to give some data if the board would like.
Probably be helpful, I would think.
So to identify the number of parcels that are bisected by the existing Zone 2 delineation, and possibly an acreage breakdown of in and out. All right. Moving on, next section on Page 4, Use Restrictions. So comparing the existing bylaw to the model, there's a few differences in how the water supply protection overlay is shaped in terms of outlining prohibited uses. From this model's perspective, the town breaks it into two categories, with prohibited, but also a secondary group of restricted. So it creates kind of two levels of regulation. The model prohibits all except, granted that they meet a certain design criteria. So it's not hard and fast prohibition. The section within the existing bylaw for the town, there's no exceptions to the prohibited subset of seven, I believe.
I think it's helpful to get some, illuminate on that a little bit. In the model bylaw, it lists uses and says, these uses are prohibited unless they meet the performance standards stated herein. An example of that being storage of liquefied petroleum is prohibited unless it's above ground and meets one of these containment measures. The town's existing bylaw expressly prohibits storage of liquefied, liquid petroleum underground and gas stations, car washes, which the model bylaw doesn't prohibit. You just have to meet these performance standards. So I think that's a good way of viewing how they are different.
Yeah. So if we just get back to the whole, what started this whole conversation many, many months ago, is around the gas station, right? So by doing this, we would have the potential to authorize such a gas station if they adhered to the, what is specified in this bylaw?
If you use the model bylaw language, you'd be able to do that. You could, in fact, make the model bylaw, you take the model bylaw and then say, these uses are permitted by special permit if they meet performance standards. So you say they're prohibited unless special permits granted for that. And that's, you may recall, that's why I stirred everything up.
Didn't really care what you said, sorry.
That's why I stirred everything up about 18 months ago.
Oh, yeah.
But that's something, that's more of a policy issue of, so you can give Kyle some guidance, is how you want to approach. Now, you've got the model approach, and then you've got the town's existing bylaw approach. And I think it's helpful to get some idea from the board as to how you want to see that done. Do you want to make it more flexible or you want to make it less flexible?
The model bylaw, correctly, addresses Zone 2s across the state, or does it address in particular sole source aquifers?
It applies to all Zone 2s.
Are there a separate set of performance standards for sole source aquifers?
That is a wonderful question. I would have to get back to you on that. I don't know.
Are all Zone 2s nitrogen sensitive areas in terms of Title V requirements? Maybe that's outside your knowledge area.
That's, yeah, that's also a good question. I would have to get back to you. And how that relates to Title V, I don't know.
This also, this raises another question. I had not heard of your Chapter 280 before. Apparently, that's Board of Health regulation. And that's something we want to take a look at, find out. Because if, in fact, I don't know where it came from, but Mass D E P did promulgate a groundwater protection Board of Health regulation, that if you didn't want to take the bylaw approach, the Board of Health could adopt a regulation to regulate groundwater, protect groundwater. So I don't know if that's where 280 came from or not, but if, there needs to be some type of marrying between the two.
What's the 280? I'm not picking.
That's, you've got Chapter 280 in your code, apparently.
Yeah. So in the town's general bylaw, Chapter 280 is specific groundwater protection regulations as adopted by the Board of Health. So that's where there are, a bulk of the definitions that are relevant to water supply protection are already present in another section of the general bylaw. It is a broader recommendation at the end of the memo that there be some type of review of that section of the bylaw, and an attempt to, you know, bring both sections into an alignment.
And that's, since I didn't know about 280 when I did the D L T A request, that wasn't within the scope that requested. So what I will do before Kyle comes back, I will look at 280 and advise Kyle and you if I think there's some, because I don't want to go through this whole process of upgrading the zoning bylaw if the Board of Health regulation's going to prohibit the upgrades.
And, yeah. And I think this is a time when we particularly need clarity on this issue.
Right.
It's not just recent history with private applicants, but it's town, we had a very critical development.
And it may very well be that my view of 280 results in new D O T requests.
We are approaching that.
Landowners permanently employed.
But yes, in addition to the groundwater supply, or groundwater protection, Chapter 280, there are other sections of the general bylaw and the zoning bylaw that would be worth a broader review, such as your stormwater management clause, you know, any of those sections, those provisions. Your earth removal, it's got a long title, it's, but those other sections that all have implications to your water supply, it may be of value to have a broader comprehensive kind of review. But unfortunately, just the grant provided really focuses on this singular section of the zoning bylaw with the additional funds to have a roundtable conversation.
And in light of that, thank you for your offer to look at the public health side of this. I would suggest a call to Charlie Knechtke would expedite the review.
I want to take a look at first, and then I'll call him and.
Well, that's fair, but, yeah, that's probably exactly what you should do. Going well prepared.
Is Francine Tishman still involved in general bylaws?
Oh, well, the general bylaw review, yeah, I think so. I think she was just reappointed.
She should be in on that, too, I would think.
Now, from the zoning perspective, is the Board more inclined to go with the model approach that says it's prohibited by meet these performance standards, you imply for special permit for the use if you meet the performance standards? Is that something you'd want to have incorporated, or?
D E P last updated this when?
2011.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while, so.
Your bylaw is based upon the 1990s model.
Yeah, the earlier, much earlier.
Judging, judging by the 18 months ago with that gas station, and we had experts on their side of the table that said, you know, you could drive tanks through these walls they had around the tanks and the barriers and everything else. It seemed like that guy was up on his, his knowledge of what the state regs were back then, yet we didn't know about any, any of that. And regardless of that, the sentiment was, well, sorry, that's, this is our water supply. We don't care how much technology you've got and how safe they are. We don't want it. But now we're learning that there's, there's communities that have some flexibility. So.
Hattie, for instance, uses the model bylaw as petroleum storage.
You know, as I said when that one came before us, it was lovely site plan and a deep technical dissertation about why it was safe. But it was out of bounds for what we could consider by virtue of the way our bylaw simply prohibits it. So, you know, I don't know whether we're needing to consider takings as well, but having performance standards and site plan review gives us a couple of bites of the apple. And using the model with the standards gives us.
Honestly, I would tie.
Third-party authority, not us or the.
I would tie it to special permit and performance standards.
Special permit and performance standards.
So they imply for a special permit for the use and they meet performance standards. That's one of the requirements.
Yeah.
No, I get that. And I agree with you that it gives us more, if you have a stringent bylaw that says, no, it's not allowed, period, then it's, it's black and white. But if you've got some flexibility, and every case is different, then going by the special permit route and the conditions we can put on it, or whatever, on a case-by-case basis, that would be the route to go, yeah.
Do you need performance standards as they may be amended from time to time? Is that a published piece of regulation?
Typically, they reference the latest amended version of state regulation or state standard. So we'll put the latest in and make sure that, you know, the language allows for.
Policy guidance, it's floating in ether. But if it's in regulation, then it's tracked and.
Right. Yeah. So thank you, Board, for that guidance. I'll, I'll come back with some, there will be some changes.
Do we get to keep the draft maps?
Sorry. I was going to leave one of those with you, if that's all right. I would like, I'd like to take one.
I'll take special care of it.
And that would be yours.
So thank you for that. That does clarify the two sections existing, the distinction between restricted and prohibited. I did want to, I did include on this latest version, there was one topic, I didn't know how applicable it was, but given that the water supply protection district is so large, the existing bylaws does not mention stockpiling or disposal of snow and ice containing de-icing chemicals. De-icing chemicals alone are mentioned and prohibited, are the storage thereof. So I think there's, you know, it's an additional topic. It seems relevant to what's existing, but it's not explicit, something to consider.
That means no snow piles, a big Y? Is that what you're describing?
It would be any materials outside of the district coming in.
Taken off site, you know, like.
No snow dumps.
Brought into site.
Yeah, they, they take it from wherever and truck it out and dump it.
Again, that's an example. They look at the D E P model. It prohibits storage of de-icing chemicals unless.
Unless.
Such storage, including lowland areas, is within a structure designed to prevent the generation and escape of contaminated runoff or leachate. So that's what I'm saying. I think it's, it's important to take these performance standards as soon as we can and incorporate those into, prohibited uses are prohibited unless you get a special permit and meet these performance standards.
And is the building inspector or the health agent, but how's the story?
That'd be the building commissioner. That'd be the building commissioner. And that's the reason I need to look at Chapter 280 because zoning is enforced by the building commissioner. 280, I presume, is enforced by public health agent.
Right.
And so there has to be some type of, be sure we're on the same page.
Right.
And. I think that's an open question in itself, whether either one of these employees. Maybe needs some training or engagement around what we're doing.
Under master in law, the, the building commissioner, if you have a building commissioner, the building commissioner is the zone enforcement agent, officer.
We do have one of those, right Paul?
You.
Yeah, well, I haven't met the gentleman, but, and so I won't comment further.
Some communities don't have a building commissioner, they have a building inspector and then they have a building commissioner that, that another entity that oversees it, so it's a convoluted process, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't rule that out either, but, um, yeah, I think training the staff might be an issue.
One section that is inserted into the marked out version of the bylaw at the end of the memo, the model does explicitly list. Permitted or allowed uses. I inserted this language for the sake of clarity. I think reviewing the table of uses in the zoning bylaw, there are several references back to the, this section, Section 7.2 Water Supply Protection in relation to pretty regular uses of land or property. So I thought for the sake of clarity, an audience, you know, a property owner or potential developer in Zone 2 or the Water Supply Protection District, for the sake of clarity, I think it's worthwhile to add this short list of permitted uses aligning with zoning broadly, just to make it easier and clarify any confusion. I'm happy to exclude it if the Board doesn't think it's necessary, but.
I'm no lawyer, but it's nice to put something positive into a bylaw.
Not bad, right?
I'm of the opinion that to the extent that you can put the uses into the use table, it's better because it then goes across all the districts, you go in column, they're the water, water supply protection district. It's a graphic presentation and proper footnotes referencing back to this section, you're fine.
But doesn't a column, like every other zoning. That's right. Suggests that it doesn't overlay those other.
No, that's why you have to have footnote that.
Yeah, footnote, I, I almost think a different graphic because it cuts across. Why it's too all.
No, it's, it gets more difficult with certain type of uses, but generally I think it's beneficial to have all your overlay districts on the use table. And they should be noted that the overlay districts.
Right.
I defer to your explanation.
So currently, there's no distinct column for either of the overlay districts.
Okay.
Right now, they're just in a general note column to refer back to the appropriate bylaw. So. Happy to leave that as is if that's the Board's preference.
You're the master of the table of uses.
I like to tell you, I like to, if we, if we make it work and make it understandable, I like to have.
This will be the test of your comprehension. If you can translate the words into the table, then we're in good shape.
So we'll see how we, how it comes out.
All right. Happy to help. But I would generally agree, you know, the, for the sake of the length of the document and just ease of comprehension, tables are typically kind of interpreted and understood more easily, so.
Very frankly, most, many people, all they do is look at the use table.
Right.
And you don't have that district even listed, they don't even think, go back and look at that district.
Alan, the use restrictions, you've got number seven being the stockpiling. But seven on, shouldn't that be eight because seven in, in the existing is animal feedlots? There's already a seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I inserted as a proposed prohibited.
Oh, prohibited.
So that's where that restricted. That restricted group.
So it's going under prohibited use to not.
But that, that's, you know, to be determined if we're reviewing both of those sections now, looking at the model providing the standards, you know, where. Where performance standards are appropriate or permissible, that would just lead to the special permit process. So I think the restricted and prohibited would be merged in the next version.
Yeah, and I think some of the restricted will move into special permit.
Right. Which is a good segue to our next topic, which is the special permits. So by and large, as the bylaw exists currently, it's very similar to the model. In terms of applying for special permit and conditions. To be applied. The one topic that I think is of note, and I would like to draw your attention to. Consider adding the following language to the subsection. Current H 2 B, which I believe is on the very back of the memo, it's on the last page at the very top. There are three existing. Conditions and recommending a fourth. A proposed down gradient location for groundwater monitoring wells should the planning board deem the activity a potential groundwater threat. That's language straight from the model. I. Wanted to include that because of the extent of the water supply protection overlay district. And the fact that it is your sole source of drinking water. I believe it's worth considering, you know, for those special permit applications that you think do pose a realistic threat or concern. This is just another monitoring tool that the Board can. Put in place to make sure that, you know, the sole source of drinking water is protected.
Is down gradient defined or how you determine where down gradient lies on given track?
It's a good question. I believe it would have to be delineated within the site plan. Right, so I, I think it would just have to be to some topography on some contour that's, you know, at a lower elevation.
The applicant has to bring a technical argument about where down gradient lies.
Right.
And it could be a potential problem to do because they're going to do on their property.
True.
And depending on how much of the property is being developed.
True.
And how it's being developed, there may or may not be a location down gradient.
Valid point.
And, and third provided may be a basis for denying the special permit because you want to be sure that, and generally it's going to be something that has, some type hazards material associated with it. Storage of liquid petroleum may be a case where you'd want a down gradient well in case there's any leak, any C P H or whatever that you measure and determine. And so in some ways, it may be something that you incorporate into your requirements in their special permit application.
That's what I was saying, that's a particular thing.
So they plan for it ahead of time as opposed to find out after they get approved, they have.
Right.
Right, it's the whole WOBR thing with W R grace and how do you prove that groundwater flows underneath a surface body and affects properties on the other side? You need monitoring wells in the right place and the right depth. Okay, onward. I, I think this is an important one, but somebody's got to figure out how to write up the requirement, put it on the applicant, because I don't want our chairman out there trying to figure out which way is down gradient. He's busy enough.
My inclination would be in the bylaw itself. The plans include a proposed location for down gradient monitoring well. Where there's potential for threat to groundwater supply. And that, and that way it's, has to be addressed in the application.
We don't need wordsmith it here and now, but I think it needs to be clear that it's not on us to.
I think that's something he needs to incorporate into, that that's an requirement for special permit application to address that.
Yeah, I mean, down gradient too, you know, is that ground, down gradient as groundwater flows or surface water flows? I mean, in a lot of public water supply, you need to check down gradient.
Groundwater.
Of surface. Subsurface, surface flow and subsurface flow are often 180.
It can be different, so that is.
And you're more worried about the downwater.
Right.
Flow direction rather than the surface water flow.
Because you redirect the surface water flow easily.
Yeah. D E P will have something to say about that too. No, this is good. Stuff isn't easy.
Right.
So the delineation of the Zone 2.
Right.
With the line on the map. There's no new study, it's no new information to move the line from the last time we went through this exercise. Is that correct?
That is correct, to the best of my knowledge. I don't know if there is at the state level, any effort to redelineate these zones, these primary recharge areas. You know, for, as referenced, another type of water delineation that takes a long time, you know, updating flood plane. Firm, you know, flood insurance rate maps. We're still basing those overlay districts on maps from the 1980s. So I don't, I don't know exactly the last time the primary recharge areas were mapped, but I wouldn't be surprised if it was about as old.
My guess, unless there's a new well installed or a well is put to greater depth or greater withdrawal rate.
That would require.
Yeah, I doubt that you can see a redelineation of a boundary.
That makes sense, that's the only thing that would trigger it. Okay.
Yeah, I thought we'd included it, but. Yeah, so. As proposed currently, the, the down gradient monitoring, groundwater monitoring wells. Inserted into. Section H 2 B would only apply to businesses with a hazardous materials management plan. So I believe, just to clarify what I'm hearing from the Board, you're open to this condition, but more broadly for all special permits? Is that accurate or are we still focusing just on the hazardous materials?
Any special permission that would involve the. Storage or generation of a. Material that would require special performance standards for operation. And that pretty much covers it.
What you just described or titled, is that the same as hazardous materials management?
No, it's a little bit broader than that, but yeah. I'm, I'm basically thinking back to what, how the model prohibits unless it's got performance standards and what those generally consist of. And that's what I'm thinking, that's where you'd want to have. Because that's where you got the threat, threat generally.
So the next topic, which I was able to provide a little bit more context to, it was mentioned briefly in the original memo from last week, but expanded upon here. Consideration, consideration regarding permissible area of impervious surface. Currently, the bylaw reads. Forgive me, I'm not locating it quickly, but, oh, here we go. The second to last page, special permit uses. One C, the rendering impervious of more than 20% of any single residential lot. The threshold as it is, is actually. Greater than. The threshold established by the Massachusetts Wellhead Protection Regulation, which requires the 15%. Or 2,500 square feet, whichever is greater. Unless a system of artificial recharge is provided, that will result, that will not result in degradation of groundwater quality. So I brought this before the Board to consider, you know, currently the bylaw has a greater threshold, which is less protective and it's. In what it's proposing or requiring, rather. And it's limited to just residential lots, so. By adopting language that is in italic, italics here on, in the middle of page five, that paragraph, starting with the rendering impervious, that's closely in line with the model language. It's been expanded on a little, a little bit. And so that's really for the sake of. Requiring a special permit so that the planning board can then determine, you know, if the amount of proposed impervious surface. Is actually. Appropriate and if the. Remediation strategies, the. The recharge is actually protected and maintains the same. You can do it a few different ways. There's two sections of similar best practice management, best management practices, excuse me. That does break it down between residential and non-residential, residential being the number one bullet, non-residential being. Bullet number two.
With a reading for comma placement, I think this is also in the right direction.
Right.
Running alongside the model and make sure that it applies not just to residential lots, that seems odd, it should be across all users.
Right. I think it's of, of value to consider, particularly with, you know, essentially all commercial. Many of your industrial zones fall within the water supply protection. You know, it's, while there's a lot of residential property in the district, there's also a lot of uses that, you know, would render impervious, you know, a portion of the property.
Sure.
So any, you know, any alterations or anything of the like would fall into that special permit process, but any rendering.
Would that intersect with MS4 permitting? We're not quite there yet on our parcel, parcel owner by owner, but at some point, I think, don't we get swept up in that? I note separately, the Select Board has commissioned a study. For stormwater management, no, no. Help me out, Dan.
Hazard mitigation, so you're trying to, no?
So, no? We just talked about it last night, sorry.
It's a system whereby large.
Oh, utility?
Owners of.
Stormwater utility?
Yes, stormwater utility.
Thank you.
So that we can charge large impervious landowners.
Right.
Street sweep.
Yeah.
Okay. At some point, the large impervious landowner has to get an MS4 permit or has to enter the district. I don't know. We don't want to have 14 similar but distinct permit requirements.
Somehow we need to incorporate, see, my big issue with the impervious is the permitted use of residential uses. Somebody's going out there and doing, build a house, the likelihood of them being told, "Oh, you're going to render more than X percent of your lot, or 2,500 square feet impervious, you need a special permit before you build a house." That is likely fall through the cracks unless somehow incorporate impervious surface into a permitted use. Impervious surface of less than 15% permitted, and that, because then they'll get caught. Otherwise, in permitting process, I can see somebody going out there and building a 2,000 square foot house, detached garage, a driveway, and they had 3,000 impervious surface, and they're not going to be caught until it's already done. And as you all know, once it's already done, it's almost impossible to correct. So we need to look at how to incorporate that, so that gets caught up front as opposed to afterwards.
The definition of impervious is up to date?
It should be. I believe it was in there.
I'm not an expert, but I've heard it debated endlessly.
We all know what impervious means to each of us.
My skull is impervious to your insult.
So I'm, I'm happy to work up some draft language alternatives and in consultation with Mr. Harris, kind of determine what would be most appropriate, if that's all right with the board.
And to which point are you addressing, or broadly?
For the impervious topic, to avoid the issue of forcing, you know, residential uses into the special permit process.
Right. Or missing them because they reasonably were not informed.
Right.
So with this new definition and new language, is that going to be on the building commissioner to find out from a site plan and renderings, where he's going to do the calculations to find out how much impervious surface there is?
Yes.
Or is that going to be up to us? Because right now.
I, well, one.
We, we've put building permits under 40,000 square feet of disturbance on the property for stormwater.
Well, I were the building commissioner, I incorporated, as one of the requirements for the application, is the question, how much impervious surface are you creating on your lot?
Roadways, roofs.
Just collectively, how much of it is. And I say that because essentially, in another town I was working with, that's what the building commissioner did, was every time, no, they had an issue of somebody getting a permit for a house here, and then they're doing a house there and adjacent lot, and they create everything. But nowhere in the building permit application did they require them to identify how much area they were going to disturb. So every time one of these came up, he kept putting that into his application process. I do that, so I would suggest that that'd be the best thing, would be building commissioner for any building permit application, and then planning board, and any site plan review or special permit application require that as one of the questions that gets answered.
And Mark, that's a, that's a pretty easy calculation for someone to do on a site plan?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, impervious, the question I have is, is there a building permit required if I wanted to expand my driveway?
Probably not.
So you could exceed, you could have something that was on the margin, and you could add and put in addition on what you could, and take you over that threshold.
And that's, that may be that, maybe there has to be some type of permit. Well, there is a provision in the zoning bylaw for a zoning determination, I think it is, and that could be where that gets caught, that they have to submit information to the building commissioner, determine that they're going, their activity is going to be in compliance. And that could be one way of doing it.
Sounds, to start the topic.
But you got a point, that that's, those marginal things, I mean, somebody's got 20, 300 square feet of impervious surface, and they're going to add a 300 square foot utility shed out back. If I doesn't build a permit, but, and if they do a greenhouse, is that going to be? I think greenhouses should be added into impervious surface. I think stream pools should be, but that's another story about stream pools. Yeah, but I think your point is very valid. The smaller things may very well get, go by, go through the cracks unless some mechanism is developed to keep that from happening.
Well, they've already gone through the cracks. All the houses that have been, the big houses that have been built here in recent years with long driveways, yeah, it's fallen through the cracks a long time ago.
And the other problem you have is, somebody's going to be under 2,500 because they're not paving the driveway. They're going, there's going to be a dirt driveway, and then two years later, they come back and have a contractor pave it for them.
You need a building permit to pave?
Probably not.
Then it won't get caught?
No. And I'm not sure if there's any DPW permit that's required, because they probably already have the existing curb cut.
Just expanding your parking area.
Right.
Can I ask you a question? Is it, it's 15% now, so I'm wondering, how is?
20% now.
Oh, sorry, 20% now. How is it handled now in those cases, right? Are those just things that fall through the cracks currently? Okay, so we're trying to fix something that is a current problem. I get it. Thank you.
And the other thing that this trying to do is, and I think maybe I'll look how it did, is, and I think does, is right now, it's a firm 20% period. This lows it to 15%, but you can go more than 15% with a special permit. So allow people to actually do what they want to do and comply with the law.
Yep.
And most people, I'm going to miss, most people, if made aware and given the opportunity, will seek to comply.
Yep.
It's the 5% that.
What's the, what's the penalty if they don't?
It's a zoning violation.
And there's no, and there's nothing in the books for that violation?
A statute, it can be 300 dollars per day violation, but you got, your building commissioner would have to take them to court and have that levied. And most building commissioners will seek to resolve the problem and bring them into compliance, and that's the real objective, is to get somebody to comply, to be in compliance. It's not generating money, it's just to get them to comply.
So, wouldn't it be reasonable to have a work session with our employee who's charged with implementing this?
Maybe after all this is resolved, yeah.
Well, we've come up with some really good examples, like the one Mark just came up with, and I'm guessing that the man in the trenches, woman in the trenches, as it may be, I don't know, would come up with some more. And we, as the policy board, need to explain why we're headed to this fraction, and what in particular is changing, because, I'm sorry, I don't expect most employees to sit down and read the zoning code from end to end, even if it is their job.
I do think it's a good idea, once we get the water supply protection district proposal crafted, and once we see where chapter 280 fits in.
Yes.
And get that resolved.
Particularly.
Then possibly have a work session that involves the DPW, the highway director, Board of Health, and building commissioner, and conservation, go through, do all this.
Yeah.
That's up to y'all. Y'all know the personalities.
Yeah, right. Three out of the four would work.
You would think that someone, like Northampton's done with their stormwater fee, that they charge everybody, depending on the impervious surface you have. It probably could be implemented in this town for going forward with new, new construction. If, you know, if the, if the fines and the, aren't going to work, then say, listen, okay, you've got this, and you wanted this, so you're going to have to now pay the highway department X number of, an extra fee for your impervious surface.
And if you do establish a utility, stormwater utility, I would expect there'd be an incentive probably for the highway department, as probably they're being housed, to keep abreast of increases in pervious surface that people create, especially in the water supply protection district.
Thank you, gentlemen, for that discussion. It was.
It was very enlightening, wasn't it?
I think it's very, very pertinent, though, and I think you did speak to some general recommendations that we have for our boards, you know, anytime we provide bylaw revision recommendations, having a broader working group to talk through all those implications, clarify across boards, identify the responsible town staff, is always best practice and recommended, so. One thing I did want to touch on before we get into that topic of enforcement that is included, in some of the best management practice language that was provided, it runs over onto the top of page six, highlighted is the number 10, that last sentence is, "Any infiltration basins or trenches shall be constructed with a 10-foot minimum separation between the bottom of the structure and maximum groundwater elevation." So.
Where in town do we have this?
Yeah, we, we highlighted that number because it's, again, this is a recommended best management practice. The Mass DEP model bylaw sets a standard of four feet of separation, minimum of four feet of separation between any containment structure or infrastructure and maximum groundwater level. The existing bylaw.
Zone two, or just?
In zone two, yeah. So in the, in the existing bylaw, sets the standard at five feet minimum separation. We mentioned the 10 feet as best practice, because some of the research that we're seeing coming out of UMass related to groundwater hydrology, it looks like the trend is groundwater is coming up, kind of, I guess that's surface, yeah, that elevation is increasing closer to the surface elevation.
So there, you could not build anything unless the groundwater was 15 feet below ground.
Right.
Period. And there are very, very few places, I dug holes all over this state, and there are not very many places, 15 feet down and not finding groundwater.
I will, I'll tell you this, we had a project that, they had designed it at four feet, and our bylaw required five feet, and that was a major redesign for them to meet the five foot.
Right.
Now, this is one more foot, and if you add additional five feet.
You're not going to build it.
That could be, that could be a nonstarter for.
That's what I thought. I mean, it would be lovely, but that's not the way our geology works.
No, no.
Five feet is already a significant.
Burden.
Burden for some.
So you're suggesting five?
No, he's suggesting 10.
I was putting it in there as.
Our attention to an initial goal.
We defer to the groundwater specialist over here, the guy that's dug all the holes.
It sounds like five feet is a, is a happy standard that the board has.
So much clay interleaving with these luthier deposits.
This is no plate of topography, all the, all the stuff's been scraped off. You know, even, even at four feet, you've got, you know, eight feet down to groundwater before you, because you have to put your foundation down four feet below frost. So if you go four feet, if you consider the bottom of your footing for your foundation as the bottom of your structure, you're down, you know, minimum eight to nine feet to groundwater in not that many places you go. I mean, you find them, but.
So it might be, if you do 10-foot, you might have a one-foot deep infiltration basin, that's it. If you can get, that's pushing, because you're not, you don't have much space available.
That's fair.
Thank you.
You'd like five feet.
I think five feet is my comfort.
Yeah, I think, I think five is adequate.
Sounds good. The last section from the model that was inserted into the existing bylaw, a short clause regarding enforcement, as there was nothing currently existing, a short provision that reads, "The enforcement of this bylaw will adhere with section 3.3 of the zoning bylaw."
And what does 3.3 say for enforcement? Do you have it there?
Uh, yikes, I don't believe I printed that one off.
Faces the building commissioner enforcement.
Yeah, essentially. It gets into the, you know, the nuance of posting infractions and, and all that.
You're not going to be happy with all the other things he's going to happen.
State law is already giving responsible enforcement of the zoning bylaw to the building commissioner. So by putting this in there, you're not adding, you're simply reinforcing that this is not a separate enforcement process.
I think we need to engage.
And somebody's not enforcing the bylaw, that may be, that may be something for the select board to have a session about, because those problem heads are under the select board, not the planning board.
True.
Broader recommendations?
Yes, so, again, I believe we've touched on some of those. That first paragraph really just relates to the need for considering additional regulatory frameworks, acknowledging that the model is 13, 14 years old at this point. I believe if the guidance from the planning board is to follow the model, but reference the best or latest and greatest performance standards, I think we would be addressing that concern. Additionally, there are sections of the municipal code that deserve mention and may need to be reviewed. As mentioned earlier, section 7.12 of the zoning bylaw, related to soil, loam, sand, gravel, quarry, and other earth materials, especially subsection B, related to commercial activities. Chapter 280 of the general bylaw, related to groundwater protection, again, under the authority of the Board of Health, and then possibly chapter. the authority of the Board of Health, and then possibly chapters 224 and 227 relating to your stormwater management. Second paragraph mentions the reality that your primary recharge zone, zone 2, the town's public water supply is a natural feature that crosses municipal boundaries. As you can see in the map in front of you, a large portion of it extends south, crossing the Westfield town line. This just acknowledges that coordination and collaboration between the municipalities can ensure equal degree of protection, and we broadly recommend that reconvening of an intermunicipal organization, similar to Baypac, if not Baypac as it was. And then additionally, you know, just acknowledging that before any of these recommendations would proceed to a town meeting for vote from the legislative body, residents, PVPC does not have the legal expertise to check everything, so we always recommend that the community seeks town council's review and recommendations, if there's any glaring concerns.
I think you laid this out really well for us to make informed choices.
And then the last, the last four pages, Kyle, are just all the changes that we've covered that are going to be edited into the new bylaw, correct?
Correct, they're...
deletions and additions, yeah.
Yeah, it's not extensive, given that there are some outline or outstanding questions, I was waiting for guidance, so there will be another version with revisions.
A couple of minor nitpicks, maybe, but on section E, E1, E1E, it said permitted uses or maintenance, repair, and enlargement of any existing structure, subject to section F and G. And F and G do not mention anything about drainage in impervious areas. H is where we mention the percent of impervious areas. So, in theory, permitted use, I can expand the size of my house any amount I want to, unless the language were changed. If you just add H, you're okay.
Right.
I would suggest H and I.
I look forward to reading the next one.
Cause special permits, I covers, large intensification, alteration of existing commercial or industrial use, so it could be, so I could also fit in that, so. I'm not sure the F fits in, cause that's prohibited uses.
Then one more minor thing, we had, this whole thing evolved around the gas stations, and we said, no, we could theoretically approve that, special position, but under prohibited uses, number four, it specifically says prohibited transmission of petroleum products underground. So, in theory, if you have a gas station and they pump from the tank to the pumps, it's transmitting petroleum underground. I mean, I mean, it says no, you don't need, we don't need any gray areas either, we...
You're right. F2 already prohibits via gas stations.
Right, well, we were talking about possibly putting on a special permit on their, they need performance criteria, then we could allow them a special permit, but if it's a prohibited use, it's prohibited.
But if you take the gas stations out of prohibited and just address it the way the model bylaw does, inquire a special permit for above, for storage of liquid petroleum, as long as it's above ground, don't have any underground transmission then, and it has to have containment on site.
Right.
Then I think you address that issue.
But if you left that edge, that item in there, you cannot do transmission underground petroleum products, it's prohibited. And you get the gas from the above-ground tank to the pumps, they only pump that over the government, I mean, it's a...
Yeah, you're right, yeah, they're still pumping underground, yeah. So, needs be inception for that.
Yes, if we're...
We think we can prevent petroleum pipelines from being sighted throughout our town. Let's have bylaw, but we don't really have that authority.
Yeah.
Over time, we do.
Yeah, so in the next iteration, we'll clean up some of these prepositions that would exist, or already do. Any further comments about this, or...
Pre-existing, non-conforming, it just is, I mean, how is that addressed somewhere else in the bylaw?
As long as it's staying the way they are, they can continue.
They need no permit.
Generally, no.
Right.
Only if they're going to alter them.
If they need no permit, then there's no impact.
Right. Because it is what it is, if you've got a gas station that was there prior to the zoning bylaw...
We do.
And you're not changing the pumps, not changing tanks, you're not changing the building, you're not taking grass area and paving over, you're fine.
But if they wish to expand, they're under the current rigs, right?
Yep.
No, they wish to expand, then they would, and they're in the water supply protection district, then they'd have to comply with the new bylaw.
Right. Because Cumberland came a couple of years ago, looking to, looking to expand and remodel their store, a lot of them are on the area, but I believe the water supply protection stopped them cold in their tracks.
And that's the reason you have provision for special permit for large intensification or alteration of existing commercial or industrial use.
When do we sit down with Westfield and talk about what's going on in that part of the zone?
That's a great question.
It's kind of a mess down there, isn't it?
Potentially.
Is that with the...
I see a number of land uses that are probably on the prohibited list. You've got large gravel pits, you've got very intense agricultural operations, and stuff that's far enough off the road that who knows what's going on.
So, as to the question of convening, you know, your neighboring municipalities' representatives, the strategy that we've come up with is, we're starting with a conversation with Southampton officials. So, my colleague Patty Gamborini, our chief environmental planner, who has a long memory of Baypac...
Yeah.
And she's the expert of this topic. She's reached out to Brett, the water superintendent.
Yes.
I forgot his last name, excuse me, and Scott, the new town admin, to try to get a conversation going. So, it's going to start with them. The intention is that Patty and PVPC would facilitate the conversation, but the town would be the host, you know, as this is part of a DLTA grant for the town of Southampton. We would host the conversation in town, but really it would be Patty facilitating a conversation, reaching out to those former members of Baypac, to get a sense of where each community is, and really gauging their openness to either reorganizing as Baypac or exploring another alternative. There is opportunity, there's a current MVP project, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, it's a great, it's a state funding source for climate resilience and planning. There is a regional MVP, drinking water-focused project that Patty is managing with various communities throughout the valley, and directly working with water suppliers. So, there's an opportunity to continue the conversation through that project, which we would hope to leverage that funding. But as of right now, you know, we're planning for one roundtable conversation to occur this calendar year, to get a better sense of what other communities are thinking, and if they're open to coming back together to protect the shared resource, which is the Barnes Aquifer.
And so, the goal is Southampton would host for not just Westfield, but the other former...
Right, Holyoke, East Hampton, North Hampton, yeah, any of those former members, I believe all of them would be invited. I don't have the roster on the top of my head, but Patty, with her past experience convening Baypac and working with that advisory committee, she's got the list of important people to reach out to. I believe the initial conversation is hopefully going to be happening sometime next week, the last email I saw today, so. Hopefully, it's been a bit of a struggle to connect with Scott, we found some issues with the town admin email address. So, I think we've rectified that, and hopefully they'll have that first conversation in the next week or so.
Anything else for Kyle? Back to the drawing board.
At least it's not square one.
It's like a team ball, you just put the ball there and we hit it.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work.
Lot of work, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you all. I'm happy to leave the maps, I'm also happy to take one back.
He wants one.
I think you have one.
You won't get his.
Fight those guys, not me.
Appreciate it.
I'll give it back to this. All right. Move that one more.
Frame, this is going straight into...
I wouldn't be surprised if the water super should have this, because these were, I believe, generated for Baypac communities.
Could you email me a copy of that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Something about being able to see town...
Yeah, copy, copy the, copy me on that, and I'll send it to the board, too, yeah.
Okay, and I'll forward the latest version of the document.
Yeah, yeah, and keep me informed when we can reconvene this. Good, thank you, Kyle.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing I had on the agenda here were three approved, pre-approved building permits that were under 40,000 square feet. One was at 80 Cold Spring Road, that's a new house. 45 Cook is a garage or another building going on that existing site, and 79 Maple Street is the house that burned there a couple of years, two or three years ago, up there on Maple Street, they're rebuilding.
I move we accept the report from the chair of building permits that he issued previous.
Second.
Most made second on favor.
Aye.
So, I don't have any other committee reports of anything of note that's important. Otherwise, I'll ask, what's, what's next on your agenda when some of these other topics we're working on?
At last, I mean, there's the issue of short-term rentals, and I've done some research on that, and put that together, I'm also working on further revision of, now they've looked at site plan review, I'm looking at the different parts of the zoning bylaw that relate to that, such as, I believe it's Solder, no, it's, yeah, Solder.
Solder, yeah.
Because one level uses site plan approval, one's site plan review, so I'm going, yeah, so I'm going to bring that into consistency.
Don't we have to revise that period, though? I thought that's what we were going to...
You want to do that as well, but, but I'm looking at, at a minimum, bring it consistent with the site plan review language.
In a couple of weeks of the next meeting, if the application comes in the next couple of days, there's another ground mount Solder, and a gal from Valley Solar, she was very taken aback, she says, I got to go up all through this for a ground mount installation? She says, we don't have to do this in other communities. Is there a by right with a ground mount in most towns? Are we out of sync on that?
I think it varies, because I know one community requires site plan review for...
Residential, yeah.
Yeah, some, I know one community requires site plan review for all ground mounted. They exempt roof mounted, but ground mounted, they tend to be more concerned about, because ground mounted usually results in trees being moved and neighbors being potentially concerned. So, they at least do a site plan review, use on ground mounted.
I found that hard to believe, they run that somewhere else, unless 99% of their business is all rooftop, which a lot of it is, but she was, and they're a big outfit there.
I'm happy that we are where we are, because of our very last ground mount permit application, where the guy was trying to put a utility spanning a walk line.
Well, when I meant by, I thought maybe if the bylaw was revised with, it would give the building inspector a right to, to make a judgment on it, but I guess he doesn't want to get involved with tree, like you say, the trees and where it's located, and if it's going to be screened.
There's, there's several reasons why some communities do site plan review for ground mounted. You've got the trees, you've got the fact that on Street A, nobody's going to complain, but Street B, everybody's going to complain, and building commissioners and town planners typically don't want to be the one that makes the approval. If they're going to get 10,000 calls from Street B, they'd rather have the planning board be the ones that get, that list it. And then you've got issues of, especially in communities that have septic tanks, making sure that the ground mount does not interfere with the septic field permitting.
But it has access to the septic permit. Most towns, they can't put their hands on the dam.
No, but when you go to the site plan review, they should be showing the septic absorption field on the site plan.
So, it's going to go find it.
In other words, you don't want it over a leach field?
No, you don't want to have them taking trucks over the leach field to build it, to install it, no. I don't think it's...
Right, so, maybe where she's confused in my question, special permit, this requires a legal notice and notification to a bugger. Would site plan review require the same?
It could, yes.
A legal notice?
Yes.
Or just a bugger notification?
Typically, it would require a legal notice as well as a bugger notification. The difference between special permit and site plan review is, you know, two major differences. One, you can't really deny a site plan approval, as long as it meets all your criteria. Special permit, there's far greater latitude to deny. Two, site plan approval, I'm going to get three of you to agree. Special permit, if you don't have five members, I've got to get all four members to agree. And it's far more, far easier to get three out of four people to agree to something than four out of four.
No, I'm just, I can't, I can't get over that. She, because she said, when you're talking legal notice, I said, yeah, it's got to be published in a paper, and you're going to pay the cost of the ad, and she, she said...
Now, some communities will do a, they would treat this maybe as a minor site plan approval, and not require the legal notice and... and not require the legal notice and public hearing, just reviewed by the departments, put on the agenda, and it goes on without notice to the butters or anybody else, it's just...
The butters would want to know, I'm sure.
I think that, to me, that's the biggest reason for having...
But can you do, can you do a butter notification without a legal notice?
Yeah, you can.
All right, well...
You can write the bylaw that way, yes.
I think it's just a little too convoluted the way it is, and it's an extra cost to the applicant, more time involved with a legal notice and publication, if we can streamline that somewhat, but the butters are notified.
Okay, well, um...
Because I rarely, when I read all the legal notices that come around, I think we're the only town that I ever read, read one that had fun for a solar installation.
But this gets into a question that I want to ask you all. Now, do you want to say that on all site plan review projects, no legal notice, or only no legal notice is a site plan review in a residential zoning district? Reason I ask is, if there's a gas station wanting to be built, do you want to require them, and they don't require a special permit, this is site plan review, do you want to require them to have a notice run in the newspaper two times? But if it's somebody doing something in residential district, such as, or agricultural district, such as a ground-mounted residential solar, they don't have to do it. So I'm trying to get some gauge of how you want to do this.
You're talking apples and oranges when you have a commercial entity versus something residential.
I understand it, but, but we're talking about what the bylaw requires for site plan review. If you want to say site plan review requires public notice for any site plan review in a commercial setting, but only requires notification of the butters in a residential setting...
Yes, yes.
Then that's what we need to write.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Is that what I'm reading there about, yeah?
That's, yeah, you would want to, you want to separate the two. You would rather have a legal notice so everybody knows about the gas station rather than someone's ground mount solar.
Anything commercial, residential don't need to have a whole legal notice. I agree, I think a residential site doesn't need to have a legal...
A butter notification, I agree with, yes.
I'm in agreement with where you're headed. I want to make sure that where state law requires legal notice.
State law doesn't regulate site plan review at this time.
Okay, because...
Only special permit.
You know, legal notices, unless you subscribe to a paper, paper, who goes looking for that even if they've got online news?
Nobody.
It is not a help, I mean, I'm all for the principle, but it is ineffective and it's convoluted and it's expensive, and so...
It goes back 40, 50 years ago, when that's how everybody got the news, is from the newspaper.
I delivered those newspapers, I get it.
And town hall and...
In this day and age, they get everything off the website, off the internet.
Yeah.
And, and to me, is actually better because I can sign, I can go to, most communities have their websites set up that you can subscribe to get all planning board agendas and notices.
Yeah, but, okay, agendas and notice, agendas, yes, submissions, not a, not a hell.
Everybody wants, you know, everybody in town just want to know, so they only want the notices that affect them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the city of East Hampton has all of the submissions available nicely indexed, you can follow a project from beginning to end. We have explicitly rejected enforcing the electronic receipt, so we have emasculated ourselves, we cannot provide that service.
When I was at South Addy, for the last 18 years, I posted every application on the website.
That is good public service, not publishing it in the newspaper or record, but it, yeah, there's prerequisite steps that we need to, so I'll say no more.
It used to be that if you submitted a revision to your plan, that got posted as well.
Now, I don't know, I don't know if the clerk, I send it to Lucy when these legal notices go out, and I know she posts it on the board here, but I don't know if it's posted on the town website somewhere, or am I expected to do that? I hadn't been doing, but I would expect that any legal notices would be, if I sent it to the clerk, they would, they would go into the town website.
Yeah, I would hope they are, that's...
But I know it's definitely posted out here.
Because if, if you get an electronic notice, it's basically one more step to put on the website.
Yeah.
I mean, if I send, if you send the agenda, you post the agenda, same step is necessary, is required for posting the notice, so it should be just as easy to do.
Good, so if you get, when you get your material together, or if you want to present something, let me know so I can put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Kyle didn't give me a date when he'd come back, so what are you expecting, a few weeks?
Yes, I expect Kyle probably ready early November. I expect to get something from Kyle in early November.
Is the DO, their timeframe, is that a calendar year?
End of December, yeah, it's calendar year.
He's got to get this done before December.
Right.
He got a late jump on it, to be honest with you.
They generally don't start it till July.
Right.
And then they have to do it by the end of...
Do we have our next application teed up?
They have, they have to...
No, but I, let me read chapter 280, and that may tee up the next application.
Well, the one, oh, the general, general by law 280?
Yeah, I want to read that, because that may, depending what it says, that could undo what we were trying to do here. And so there need to be conversations out, and see if we can get that, be sure on the same page. So I'm going to read and see where we are.
So the other point of interest, the town now owns 117 to 125 College Highway. It took a little while, and one of the hiccups was indeed, good news, because a family in town, prior land, prior owner of this parcel, decided to donate towards purchase price to offset the borrowing that the town would have to do. So we waited for that gift to arrive and actually be applied. But the town now owns 117 to 125 College Highway.
Oh, good.
And as of today, we have two out of three requested proposals for land planning and public engagement, and we'll be reviewing those to see how they address our needs. But the idea is to have this work completed early in the new year, and that it would then tee up whatever one-stop expressions of interest we might see appropriate in terms of whatever infrastructure development we might need to move forward with the parcel for senior center, public safety building, and then housing with and without sewer, housing with and without a zoning change. The zoning as it stands, we know is not entirely friendly towards affordable housing. So said our housing production plan, there are a number of things that aren't as conducive as they might be. And mixed use, I think, is strictly forbidden, even though we're in the village, commercial village residential. So that'll be the job of the land planner, to look at our wish list and a logical arrangement of uses on the land, and say, "How far out of whack are we with current zoning and how do we address that?"
And the feasibility of all that already gets into, can you get sewer to the area?
Yep, yep. Duly noted that you feel strongly we should have a letter of intent with the elected officials in East Hampton, we'll work towards that. But both our direct personal contact and then tie-in bond working on the feasibility, it's all been, everybody leaning in the right direction. And, you know, a letter of intent is only intent, and it's always...
I'd actually, I'd actually like to go, I'd actually like to see, go beyond letter of intent and actually get a municipal agreement to, that commits them to allocating certain percentage of their, or certain amount of their treatment capacity, and to take tie-in from the town.
Yeah, well, but I think that that would require the result, at least a feasibility study, because they're looking at how many residences, how many businesses, what kind of flow are you imagining in this district.
Right, and hopefully your land planner will come up with some information that will give them information for that.
You know, between the tools that Mass has in partnership is developed, and any planner can double-check by going through the parcel list, God, you could do that in a simple, quick spreadsheet to generate flows. And they're going to, they're going to validate it, because all of this district is sort of public water, so they can see, at least on the res, how do they want to do this? The winter usage would be indicative of what might be going into the sewer, the summer usage, a lot of the battle transpiration from landscape. Anyway, that's, that's going forward. Tomorrow night is Greenway Committee, I think.
I don't go to that one. Take care.
All right, well, that's, that's a planning project where they've gotten encouragement from the state that the state may extract from the Westfield and the rail trail, and move towards constructing it all together, because state's picking up the bill cost. That's pretty darn cool. Okay, I'll be quiet. Move to John?
Second.
The mood, it's on paper.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.